Good evening to everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is good to see you after such a long summer. Let the record reflect that we have seven board members present, two, excuse me, Asim, Amy and Amanda. At this time, we'll call on work force to take us into closed session.
The board will go into closed session pursuant to general statute one four three dot one uh three one eight dot eleven for the following purposes under subsection A one to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential student information. This G S one fifteen C dash forward two twenty U S C uh one three two. Under subsection A one to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information, G S one fifteen C three nineteen. Under subsection A three to consult with our attorney to preserve attorney-client privileges to consider and give instructions concerning a potential or actual claim, administrative procedure or judicial action and under subsection A six to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness conditions of appointment or initial employment employment of a public officer or employee or a prospective public officer or employee.
I second the motion.
It may move in second. Are there any questions?
Good evening to everyone. We welcome you to our first meeting of this school calendar year. We apologize deeply from our board for our starting late on tonight. We have a lot of business to take care of and we appreciate, really appreciate your patience. At this time, we have recognized all our board members, seven of us are present, two, Amanda and Amy have our apps on tonight. At this time, we have our pledge. Call the media to order. Kelly?
All who are able, please stand with me for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands- One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we prepare for our moment of silence, I want to acknowledge the losses and the hurt, the grief and pain many people in our community have felt since we were last together. We have experienced the loss of family members and friends and students. And so we certainly want to keep their families in our school community and in our thoughts during this moment of silence. And I specifically want to recognize Tracy Everett-Lenz, who's our former District One representative here on the board, and her family as we continue to honor, celebrate, and remember the life of her daughter Hayden, that we were able to celebrate her life together earlier this month. So we are continuing to keep the Lenz family in our thoughts and prayers. So if everyone, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. I mean, Kelly. Got Amy on my mind. This time, are there any adjustments to our agenda?
A motion, we accept agenda.
Second by Mary. Any questions? All in favor of setting over agenda? That'd be long. Motion carried. Spotlight on teaching and learning. Beth offers.
Good evening, Chair Tripp. Board members, Dr. Lassiter, those in attendance tonight, and those watching online. We have a wonderful lineup of spotlights tonight. And we're going to start with the bus rodeo. I'm going to have Mr. Hutchinson come in. We are proud to recognize the achievements of our exceptional school bus drivers who recently participated in the DMV District One Bus Rodeo. This annual competition tests drivers in their precision, safety, and skill behind the wheel, qualities that are essential to the safe transportation of our students each and every day. This year's event was hosted by Washington County Schools and DMV District One with valuable support from Bertie County Schools Transportation Department. Pitt County Schools was proudly represented by three of our drivers who competed with professionalism and excellence. Please join me in congratulating these dedicated individuals for their commitment to safety, their impressive performance, and for representing Pitt County Schools with pride at the 2025 DMV District One Bus Rodeo. At this time, I invite Mr. Rich Hutchinson to present the school bus winners.
This evening, we actually have some special guests with us who are part of our transportation family. They are not Pitt County Schools employees, but they are huge supporters of ours. So first, I have Ms. Yvonne Lucas. She is the District One DMV trainer supervisor. So she supervises all of us in the east and northeast and makes sure we have good, high-quality trainers getting our bus drivers set up to take care of our students. I have with us also Mr. Adrian Gray, who has been part of Pitt County Schools' family, but he's moved onward onward. And now he takes care of us by training our bus drivers. You'll see them a lot of times spaced out of the Farmville or South Central bus lots. So they're here to help me pass out awards since they are the folks who actually make the rodeos happen both here in Pitt County and for District One. So thank you both for joining us. First person we would like to recognize is Ms. Charmaine Wooton from Welcome Middle School. She was our third place finisher here in Pitt County. This next person we're going to recognize is Mr. Joshua Riley. He was our second place finisher here in Pitt County. And then our first place finisher for Pitt County was Ms. Trina Watson from E.B. Hickok. All three of these drivers are on the bus every day taking care of our kids, making sure they get to and from school safely. All three went and competed in the District One competition, as Mrs. Hill first mentioned. And we actually ended up winning District One competition. So Mr. Joshua Riley actually came in first in the district. He went on to compete at the state where we didn't do quite as well. It was the first time we had gone to the state in quite a while. So it was a learning experience for all of us, I think. Don't you agree, folks? He ended up placing 10th of 33 drivers. So we're hoping to have another good showing next year. We had 19 folks participate this year after a long hiatus. And so hopefully, we get to see somebody from every school next year. We'll probably be back out at the Farmville lot because that's our nice big space for us that we can do things in. And if you, I think Mr. Tripp has stuff for y'all.
On behalf of this wonderful board that we have here in Pitt County, we'd like to thank you for your service. I have a deep appreciation for bus drivers. Being that when I was a teenager, I did not realize what responsibility I had in my hand of bus drops. But since then, I've learned that's an awesome, awesome responsibility. You're carrying precious cargo up and down the road, and that's all children. We appreciate what you do. Give them a hand.
And admin as well. You'll come right this way. Look this way, Mr. Hans. Every one in this room wishes we could clone those outstanding bus drivers. The International Thesbian Society, a program of the Educational Theater Association, honors student achievement in theater arts. In June, J. Troz High School's International Thesbian Society Troop Eight Nine Four took its third trip to the International Thesbian Festival, a premier gathering of high school theater students from across the country. The festival celebrates excellence in theater through workshops, college auditions, professional development and adjudicated performances. You guys don't come behind me, come over here. They want to see your lovely faces. This year, Troop Eight Nine Four brought 17 students to compete in seven events, including costume design, solo and duet dance and group and duet musical theater. The troupe earned superior ratings, the highest possible in four events, while two of their performances received the coveted Thesbi Award for earning top scores in their categories. Additionally, their group musical number, Mama Mia, was awarded Critics' Choice earning the exceptional honor of performing on the festival's main stage during the closing ceremonies. The trip marked an unforgettable achievement for these students and underscored their dedication to the art of theater. And to my knowledge, this is the very first time we have brought in the J. H. Rose Thesbian Group. So we are so honored to have you with us tonight. Congratulations to Ms. Gobioski and her magnificent thesbians. And Gracie Shrimp, where's Gracie? Gracie is president of this wonderful group and has been to the International Thesbian Competition three times. So we would love for you, my friend, to introduce your colleagues.
Yes, okay, so my name, as before, is Gracie Shrimp. These are my fellow performers. We have Cassie North, Raylan Phillips, Aria Pike, Sarah Grace Coyle and Eden Bassnight. So once again, I would just like to express, just from the bottom of all of our hearts, just our overwhelming sense of gratitude. We feel so blessed. So not only did our group, Mama Mia, place first place in the whole entire country, I would just like to go back and reiterate what Critics' Choice is because we also got to perform there. So there are 2,000 acts roughly that make it to the international level every single year. And so we were first place, but also with Critics' Choice, there are only 10 groups that get to perform at the end, in front of everybody at the closing ceremony. And we were one of them. And so we are so excited. And so that was in front of 5,000 people, the biggest like audience we've ever performed of. And so that was 5,000 of our peers, teachers. We were introduced by Carly Hughes, who's like really famous for Broadway. And oh, Stephen Schwartz, he was there too. So we got to perform in front of him. So we're so blessed and grateful, so thank you.
Aria Pike? Oh, yes ma'am.
First of all, on behalf of the Pitt County Board of Education, we are so proud of you. I was blessed to be there, to be with you all and take pictures and actually put you all on Facebook that night that evening I attended and you all were so awesome. Carol, you got it covered all in. You so well. But we do, we're so proud of you and Miss Alfer is going to help me sum this your name up. Ms. Pike, congratulations sweetheart.
Cassie North?
Ms. North? Congratulations sweetheart.
Raylan Phillips?
Congratulations.
Gracie Coyle?
Congratulations.
Gracie Shrimp?
Not your name. Congratulations.
And it's Grace Coyle, excuse me, and Eden Bassnight.
Bassnight?
You don't want to look.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We need to get a photo. So if you'll turn around and face this way, face Mr. Hans, please. We want your instructor here as well. It is my pleasure to introduce an exceptional young leader and 2024 graduate of North Pitt High School. This is Walt Moore. Come on in Walt. Oh, yes ma'am, I'm sorry. There we go. Thank you Carol. This past year, I'm trying to face this way. Walt served with distinction as the Vice President of Future Farmers of America. His dedication to agriculture, education and student leadership took center stage this summer when he welcomed more than 4,300 FFA members and guests to the Raleigh Convention Center for the Annual State Convention. Walt's year of service was marked by inspiring retiring addresses, the facilitation of dynamic workshops and the coordination of career and leadership development events that will have a lasting impact on students across the state of North Carolina. Now a proud, rising sophomore at UNC Chapel Hill, Walt's continuing his passion for service and leadership as he studies health policy and management. Please join me in welcoming and celebrating one of Pitt County's wonderful graduates from 2024, Mr. Walt Moore.
First of all, I want to recognize Walt for several things. Walt, you remember years ago as a freshman at North Pitt High School, you came down in January and was part of the Pink Palace where we always recognize FFA excellence. And at that time, Dr. Lassiter, Mr. Chairman, I knew then that this young man was going to be a golden places. And he's continuing to develop through his FFA skills and leadership to a place where he was made, there's one president and five vice presidents on the state officer team. He made Vice President of the State FFA Officer Team. And I'll tell you this, I've done some research. There have been 556 past State FFA officers. There's never been one from Pitt County until Walt. The other thing, it's hard to get to be a State FFA Officer if you don't go to NC State and he still got there and he went to Chapel Hill. So I'm very proud and I turn around that everybody else see. I want y'all to notice one other thing about Walt. He's not wearing a blue corduroy jacket, which is the distinguishing characteristic of FFA. He's now wearing the blue and gold blazer of FFA alumni and is a proud member of the FFA Alumni of the State of North Carolina and soon to be a Pitt County. So let's give him another round of applause. We would be remiss if we didn't let you say at least a word or two at this time. Go ahead.
Right here, this way they can hear you, no, live stream.
Let me get out of your way.
Yes, sir. Ms. Alfer and Mr. Benji gave me a fantastic introduction already. I don't know how I can top that, but I'm Walt and I have to say it's an honor to come from Pitt County and from the North River Community. I'm a sophomore at UNC and I actually changed majors. I'm no longer in health policy because of my work in FFA and with agricultural education. I've decided to pursue a career in human and organizational leadership development. I'm a member of the Honors College as well as a Fred W. Morrison Scholar, but I think most importantly, I'm a graduate of North Pitt High School. All of the skills that I've gained, though developed by the FFA and in my tenure as a state Vice President, they started at North Pitt. Like they said, we welcomed over 4,300 FFA members to the RCC this summer for state convention where I retired. But 4,300 is kind of a small number for North Carolina FFA. We're home to over 48,000 FFA members and we're the fifth largest state association in the national FFA organization. This year, all of our programming was themed around the word engage. At convention, we learned how we can engage with each other, engage with our passions and engage with agriculture. And convention really got me thinking all of the opportunities I had to engage with our 48,000 FFA members throughout my year of service, delivering those inspiring workshops and keynote addresses and remarks just like I'm giving right now. I learned the importance of conversation and how to make people feel special and the impact that that can have on other people. I've also started to think about the opportunities that Pitt County gave me to engage with FFA and agriculture. I think of freshman sophomore year Walt standing up and public speaking for the very first time at the Pitt County FFA Alumni Dinner three or four years ago. My advisor, Valen, told me to present the five paragraphs of the FFA Creed and I swore I had it. I knew I'd gotten it. Two paragraphs in, I forgot the entire thing. But I'll never forget the inspiring words of Mr. Benji and the rest of the alumni and how they've empowered me to continue on this pathway of growth and of excellence. And I'm excited to see not only what FFA has for my future, but how Pitt County FFA members will continue to engage with each other, with their passions and with agriculture. Thank you.
We have an amazing group of graduates. Don't change the world Walt, he's an impressive young man. Tonight, we are also proud to spotlight the outstanding accomplishments of the journalism program at J. H. Rose High School. Each year, the North Carolina Scholastic Media Association hosts a highly competitive statewide contest recognizing excellence in high school journalism. This year, J. H. Rose High School's journalism students rose to the occasion, earning multiple honors for both their overall newspaper and individual submissions. Among their many accolades, four first-place entries from Rose High will be featured in the Book of Firsts, a prestigious annual publication showcasing the best scholastic media work across the state. These achievements reflect not only the talent and dedication of our students, but also the strength of the program and the guidance of their outstanding advisor. We congratulate the students and staff for their creativity, their hard work, their commitment to journalism excellence. Rose High continues to make Pitt County Schools very proud. At this time, I invite Ashley Hutchinson, English and Journalism Teacher, to recognize the students.
Oops, I clicked the button.
There we go.
Sorry. All right, I'm really proud to introduce these students here tonight. Some of them are recent graduates and they've taken journalism for all four years of high school. So we have three editors in chief who lead our student newspaper. We have a lot of student leaders and that's how we develop our newer journalism students, not just with my guidance, but also with theirs. So every one of the first place wins and all the way down to honorable mention and really every entry have been guided by these three. So our first student that we'd like to recognize is Alan Hutchinson, editor in chief this year for Rampant Lines.
On behalf of Pitt County Board of Education, we congratulate you and Dr. Lassiter and you and your staff.
Our second student, this is our, she's actually very remarkable because this is our first junior editor in chief. We've always had seniors before, so Maya Swaggerty would like to recognize next is our first junior editor in chief of Rampant Lines. Our next student is one of our first place individual winners. He won a first place award for a review on the show Adolescence on Netflix that you can see on the screen right now. And that is Jack Albritton and he's our third editor in chief from this year. And our next student actually was recognized as a first place winner last year. Students are able to enter up to three submissions into the North Carolina Scholastic Media Association Contest. And this student won first place for every single one of his three submissions. So incredibly impressive. So Elliot Flinchbaugh is our next student to recognize.
Congratulations Elliot.
And we also had two sections that won overall first place. And so the next several students are some of our section editors. So our sports section and our news section, which are the, I mean, the news section is the first thing you see when you open the paper. And then the sports section is our color page on the back and you can see some of our nice work on our sports page up on the screen as well. So Elliot actually won for a sports photo, a sports back page design, which is on the screen, and also for a features photo. So he's very diversified there. So Matthew Rushing is our next student and he is a sports editor for us and he will be back editing sports or entertainment next year. Our next student is also a sports editor, Campbell Rhodes. And we have another sports editor and that's Sarah Ruth Clark. Okay, and if you're wondering why we have so many editors it's because we have a lot of students in our journalism program. So we need a lot of student leaders and we're glad to be able to give them these opportunities. And so now we're on to our news editors. So our first news editor is Mary Carson Hennan. Our next news editor is Anna Porter. And another news editor, Addison Adler. And our last student is McGavick Smith, who was a news editor this year and will be joining our team of editors in chief this upcoming school year.
Thank you all, we are so proud of you. We would love to get a photo. So if you'll turn, we're going to make two rows, smaller friends in the front, gentleman in the back. Ms. Hutchinson on the end. You can step up if you need to. We are excited to recognize D.H. Conley High School student Seth Hartley during tonight's spotlight as well. Seth is a rising senior. He was one of only 44 high school students from across North Carolina selected to participate in the 2025 Electric Youth Tour in Washington, DC. Chosen through a competitive essay contest, Seth joined more than 1,800 students from across the nation for this prestigious experience, which offers young leaders a unique opportunity to explore the nation's capital, network with their peers and learn about the vital role of electric cooperatives and how they play such a significant difference in our communities. Would you like to share anything about your experience Seth?
It was a great trip. Got to meet many, many people from all over the country, as she's mentioned. It was wonderful.
What's one thing that stood out to you?
Getting to see all the monuments, getting to visit the Capitol. That was great.
We are so proud of you.
Then you also visited the National, I mean Arlington National Recentury. You visited that, Smithsonian. And so I'm sure you got a lot of ideas. And also by you going on that visit, you also are eligible for scholarships. And we hope you good luck as a board. And we hope you good luck as a board, and we're proud of you. We appreciate you for doing that, representing not only yourself, but all of us at Pitt County.
Thank you very much.
Yes, let's get a photo with Principal Wohl as well. Seth aspires to be a mechanical engineer, so we are super excited about his future and can't wait to bring you back in a few years as one of our outstanding ones. At this time, we are so proud to spotlight two exceptional leaders in our Division of Educator Effectiveness and Leadership. Courtney Atkins, I apologize, Teacher Support Coordinator and Elizabeth Myers Career Pathway Specialist. Both Courtney and Elizabeth have recently earned the prestigious Associate Certified Coach credential from the International Coaching Federation, a globally-recognized organization that sets the standard for excellence in professional coaching. This certification reflects their commitment to continuous growth, high-quality leadership, and impactful coaching practices that directly support our educators across the district. Their achievement not only represents a personal milestone, but also enhances our district's capacity to foster teacher development, leadership, and innovation. To elaborate on this tremendous accomplishment, I invite the wonderful Dr. Tom Feller, Director of School Innovation and Transformation.
Thank you, Beth. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Really excited to honor these two ladies here. They have been working hard on this. ICF was founded back in nineteen ninety-five, and it's a force in the world for personal transformation. That's part of their goal. ICF coaches are known as professional coaches who work with others to help them become the best versions of themselves. And I cannot even quantify the number of teachers in this district who have personally said to me when I see them about the work that, like, they name them, right, about how impactful they've been. They help them become the best versions of themselves because we know that better humans make better organizations, better humans make better teachers, better humans make better leaders. And it's often considered the gold standard of coaching certification, and ICF designation represents the culmination of many hours of study and practice. Both Elizabeth and Courtney have been working for nearly three years on this, so it takes a long time. Specifically, they began the formal coaching journey in twenty twenty-two by completing a course with the Center for Creative Leadership, which is a global leadership development firm out of Greensboro. From there, they had to complete multiple hours of one-on-one mentor coaching with an external coach. They had to provide evidence of having completed over one-hundred-twenty-five hours of coaching experience. They submitted audio recordings of coaching sessions for review, and they had to pass a standardized certification exam. So I've told people that ICF certification, we can kind of think of it as like national boards, but for coaches instead of teachers. So just to demonstrate a little bit how prestigious this certification is, I'd like to share a couple of numbers. In the spring of twenty twenty-five, there were over one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand national board-certified teachers in the United States. In the spring of twenty twenty-five, same time period, there were fewer than twenty-two-thousand five-hundred coaches certified, and only fifty-eight-thousand coaches certified worldwide. So in other words, there are six times as many national certified teachers in the U.S. as there are ICF coaches all across the world. So this certification represents a significant milestone and acknowledgement of their skill. It's not hyperbole to say these ladies are at the pinnacle of performance when it comes to coaching ability and skill. I'm incredibly proud of the work they do on a day-to-day basis, and I'm thankful for the dedication and service to the students and staff of Pitt County schools. They really are making a positive difference every day. So congratulations. Good job.
Would you like to say anything?
I am a coach, not a speaker.
Thank you.
Okay. How about you?
No, I'm good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Courtney?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your dedication on behalf of the board and on behalf of our two attendants. We're very proud of both of you and what you accomplished. It's a great talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to you, if I did.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I've had a chance to work with both of them, and they are definitely beloved. Lastly, as we begin a new school year, we are launching a district-wide campaign called "I Love Our Schools." It is time for people to fall in love with public education again, and in particular, Pitt County schools. So this campaign is about building pride, strengthening connections, celebrating the incredible people who make our schools special: our students, our staff, our families, and our community partners. On August the twenty-fifth, the first day of traditional school, we are inviting our students, our parents, our teachers, our community members, civic organizations, churches to show their love for Pitt County schools. You can wear PCS swag, you can get a shirt made, you can get these made for five dollars. "I Love Our Schools." We want everyone to absolutely saturate social media that day. We want to see so much pride for public schools, and again, most importantly, Pitt County schools. So this campaign is not going to end the first day of school. It's going to be a mindset that we're going to carry into the entire school year, and we still believe the best is yet to come. So this is going to be a very special year. We look forward to seeing everyone on social media. We don't care if you're wearing T-shirts, just print out a sign that says "We Love Our Schools." So we hope that you will join us in this campaign. And for everyone that's watching tonight, thank you for believing and loving Pitt County schools. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Beth. At this time, we have a public expression. Worth.
We have two speakers, and one will be representing a group and one, an individual. And first, we'll have the one representing an individual, and that's Tricia Workah.
Good evening, board members and everyone else in attendance. I'm Tricia Workah, North of the River. I am here tonight, given the environment, our students are walking back into the first day of school. Because of the environment they're walking back into, I felt called to come and share a poem with the board tonight. It is titled "First They Came" by Pastor Martin Niemoller. First they came for the communists, and I did not speak up because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak up because I was not a socialist. And then they came for the trades unionists, and I did not speak up because I was not a trades unionist. And then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak up because I was not a Jew. And then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me. Our kids' rights are actively being taken from them right now, you guys, in front of our eyes. Every time a school board votes to rescind policies that protect our most vulnerable populations, those school boards are choosing to not speak out. So with that, I'd now like to take a moment of silence for every student that is being We're in this together, you guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Now we have our second speaker representing the group, Julie Anderson.
Good evening. I just want to say hello to all the members of the board and also to our community. I stand before you today as a mother or a grandmother and a member of Moms for Liberty. As you know, the Supreme Court has released a decision in Mahmoud versus Taylor, which will affect every school district in the country. The court held that when Montgomery County, Maryland, public schools refused to opt children out of K through five curriculum, that their parents objected to it violated the First Amendment's Free Exercise Clause. Justice Alito wrote that mandating our young children to engage in these materials presented as normative and celebratory substantially interfered with parents' rights to raise their children according to their sincerely-held beliefs. In effect, the schools crossed a constitutional line by conditioning a public education on acceptance of viewpoints conflicting with their family's faith. And what does this mean for our district? First, the school should provide clear advance notification to parents for any upcoming lessons covering the topics of gender identity, sexuality, or other related themes. Second, parents have the right to opt out their children without penalty or stigma from specific lessons that conflict with their religious convictions and district policies must be aligned. Third, children who opt out should not be given meaningful, or should be given meaningful equivalent educational opportunities, ensuring they don't fall behind while respecting family beliefs. And fourth, teachers will need guidance to handle opt-out sensitively and to implement alternative lessons professionally. This ruling doesn't ban these materials altogether, nor does it restrict academic freedom. Rather, it reinforces parental rights, which is what we're all, we all want, I hope. Ensuring families can agree or disagree with specific content presented to their younger children, I urge district to swiftly align its policies with this decision, ensuring transparency, respect, and balance moving forward. Our hope is always that this can be handled at the most basic level. In many cases, all it takes is a few thoughtful conversations with a teacher or administrator to find a solution. And finally, we would like to note that it is our understanding that the Pitt County School District has formulated an opt-out document. It is Moms for Liberty's proposal that the opt-out form is provided prior to the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So any parent or guardian can submit their intentions in a timely manner, as well as the district providing, if it hasn't already, a completed list of any potential controversial books, ebooks, audio through the school's library, and even classroom materials. As a result, we will be respectfully following all parents and guardians' religious rights, parents' rights even if not faith-based. We look forward to a productive academic year with the students and staff, and I thank you for your time.
At this time, we're going to our consent items. Items, board minutes from June thirtieth, confidential agenda items from June thirtieth, post-session personnel report. Motion. Chair. Yes. I move we approve. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Mary. Any questions? All in favor that have been on by the voting side? Motion carried. New business? We'll call Mr. Aaron Erickson.
Good evening. We have, we have two items tonight to go over as a group. The first item is... Thank you. The first item is our annual review of what's called our rental schedule fee. So as a reminder, the district does rent out different areas of our campuses to general public, private organizations, things of that nature. And every year, we go through with the board on the, prior to the start of the school year, what our actual rates are going to be for the different varying groups. So what I am seeking approval tonight is the, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the rates that are listed in the different categories, and these are slight increase over the past year. Just as a reminder, two years ago, we were around three-hundred-forty-seven-thousand dollars in the red on rentals because we weren't covering the cost of our custodial or the utilities being used. And then last year, we were around a hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand as well, so we're a hundred-and-forty-seven, a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand in the red as well. So we're trying to get back, we're not trying to make a profit, but we are trying to break even. So we would like to at least cover the cost of utilities and the cost of the custodial time or other supervisor time for our staff. So these are the increases. They're generally going from, depending on the conversation, they're mostly going up evenly across the board. The one, the three exceptions will be Conley, Rose, and South Central. The reason for those being a little higher related to utility fees is we actually are in a different pay cycle, pay structure with our utility provider. So we actually get charged more per kilowatt hour on those schools because of the size and the demand at those sites. So we do take that into account with these fee rates. So, but that's kind of the overview of what we're looking at, and then there are some special condition fees related to other rooms. If you need technician support for theater lights and sound system and things of that nature, one-time flat fees for exterior field use of just of thirty dollars if you don't need lights, so just things of that nature. So, and that's kind of what we're seeking permission to approve for use for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the rentals, so.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve. I've got, I've got discussion when you get second.
Well, second at the end.
Second by Mary. Discussion? Eric, I think it would probably behoove the public to know, I know it would me. How much participation from the public do we get in the past? What can we kind of expect every year?
We actually see rentals as much as six to eight times a week.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm. Across the district. And that's above and beyond our own personal use. So that's what's available around athletics, school programs, you know, theater programs, things of that nature, clubs. This is outside entities. See a lot of interest from nonprofits related to ECU that use our buildings. So, and we also see a lot related to... So, and we also see a lot related to outside entities in the summer that do camping, camps for our students as well. So there's a lot of use. Our biggest single-use category is the nonprofit category.
Any other question?
Thought you, I thought you was a finish.
You thought well.
It's been moved by Benji, second by Mary. All in favor?
Motion, you ask the carry? Thank you.
Okay, and the other item we've talked about for a while, but I wanted to go over a little bit in detail tonight. We received about a year and a half ago a million dollars from the county to be put towards CTE lab renovations and improvements. And we've talked with the program, kind of looking at where would this be put to the most but most used, the most benefit, where are we lacking? Where there's a lot of student interest, but we aren't providing that. And the number one area that that came up was a culinary lab for Aiden Griffin High School. And so we met with the design team, met with the school staff, multiple partners, engineers. We've, we put this product out on the street for bid, and it came back on June 17th at a base bid on this with Waters Contracting for $1,270,000. We had a million dollars, including design fees, so we went through the VE process with this company. We we went ahead and, we'll get back to the final cost in a minute, but we went ahead and did our evaluation of the contractor, reviewing their state bid bond requirements, their performance bond requirement, the contractor license requirement, and status with the state, which was active without any past issues noted. Their insurance coverage verification, their MBE, or small business participation, and then with the BBB, the Better Business Bureau rating and accreditation, accreditation status. And I will say that both the first and second bidders were not accredited by the BBB. So, we did a reference check with the design team and the people listed here. And I did want to draw your attention to the Coastal Carolina Community College Culinary renovation that was performed for $883,968, which is a very similar, if not nearly identical, project to the one we're seeking to contract with them for. And the comments from the company, or the sorry, the community college's contact were very positive about the contractor and their experience through that project. So we are, based on where we are with the VE status and with the feedback from their references, we are seeking permission from the board to contract after VE with design fees for a total project cost of $957,871.49 to Waters Contracting, the actual contract amount would be $895,207.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move we approve.
I second.
Been moved by Benji, second by Worth. Any questions?
Just a comment.
All in favor?
Just a comment.
Oh, okay.
This million dollars came about again, it doesn't, it doesn't ever hurt to let the public know it came about again because of our county commissioners and their total support for career technical education and how vital career technical education is in the overall public education of our students, of which I am very, very excited that they see the, not only the relevance of it, but they also see the critical need of it. So I wholeheartedly support this.
Make the vote. All in favor?
I had a comment.
All right, motion carried.
Okay. I think, I think this is a great thing as well. I just, I wanted to make this publicly known that our last meeting, I advised that due to my background and what I do, that I would not be voting yea, or I would not be voting yea for a construction bid unless I was physically able to review recommendation letters and background stuff as well. I think that stuff, as we talked about, should be presented at work sessions with kind of like a portfolio for that contractor. And I was just giving a reason why my hand would not go up during the vote.
Thank you, Aaron, for requesting the information on the bidding process that we, the board had asked for. Thank you for getting all of that information to us. You've done outstanding in doing that, and we look forward to continue to doing that as we continue to put things out on the bid. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
First reading of policies in response to our House Bill 959, Emma Hudson, all attorney.
Good evening, board members. As you all are aware, and it has been reported in the news, our General Assembly with the signature of the governor has passed Session Law 2025-38, also known as House Bill 959. This bill has been described as a cellphone ban for public schools. Just to clarify, there is more going on in the legislation, including some things that will begin next school year around instruction on social media and mental health, as well as adoption of a policy on internet safety. But at present, the board is also charged with adopting a policy banning wireless communication devices. You have until January 1st of next year to do this. However, we are recommending that we move forward with implementation of a policy to have our school year be consistent. Ms. English will share some more practically about how we are going to go about this. But for now, I just want to give you some background and some history on Pitt County schools and cell phones. So, many years ago in the early 2000s, I was a student at DH Conley High School. And at that time, cell phones were relatively new technology. I had one, it stayed in my car. My mother wanted me to use it only to call her in the event of emergency. So it mostly stayed off, and it mostly stayed in my car. And in fact, at that time, you were not allowed to have a cellphone in the building of a school. I had a classmate who, her phone was off, it just happened to be in her hand, and it was actually confiscated. So I just mentioned this to say that historically, this technology was somewhat taboo. Prior to 2016, we did have a policy on wireless communication devices that was addressed primarily in our Code of Student Conduct, and I won't bother to read that to you. Presently, you have a policy that on the use of wireless communication or other devices, that policy has not been amended since August 1st of 2016. But at the core of this policy, we do not permit students to use cell phones on our campuses during instructional time. We do, however, recognize that they are a means of communication between parents and students. And as noted, there is a prohibition in the policy. While we have this policy, there is an intent, I think, at this juncture from our General Assembly to shake up what we are doing a little bit. Because of course, this is a battle for our staff, often with students. But to shake up what we have been doing, and so as noted, we have asked that you go ahead and adopt two updates to policies. One specifically related to personal communication devices. And then one clarifying, because this bill does not have a personal limitation, but an adoption to our technology responsible use policy. Two, and I will come back to this in just a minute. Sorry. To give instruction that those devices are to be stowed away, except as provided in the law, which would be for the purpose of instruction. So if the teacher says, take out your Chromebooks, it's time to use them, we're conveying our expectation there as well that that device will be put away, stowed unless, unless instruction is given to take it out. So that is just bringing everything into very clear alignment with the mandate. Just as some, some things, as I said, the General Assembly is really wanting us to shake things up a bit. There has been a recognition that youth use cell phones primarily to access social media. But they are wanting us to look at our policies, practices, and procedures. I'm going to ask Ms. English to come forward and just give you the practical, what the, what the changes to policies will do.
Okay, so what you're looking at is our current code of conduct on the unauthorized use of electronic or communication devices. And I'll read this so that everyone can hear it, not because I usually read to you, but no student shall have in sight, have turned on, or use any unauthorized personal communication or electronic device on school property during school hours without permission from a school official. These devices include, but are not limited to cellular/smartphones, tablets, scanners, laser pointers, radios, compact disc cassette players, camera, handheld video games, and video recording devices. So right now, in our schools and in our code of conduct, this is a level-one offense. So that means that it, you know, it is a very, that's the lowest level of offense. And confiscation is listed as an option. So typically, what happens during the school day with our principals and teachers now is if a student has one of these devices out and it's causing a problem for instruction, they'll ask them to put it away. If the student doesn't comply or complies and then gets it back out, typically what ends up happening is that device is brought to the office for the student to pick up or the parent to come pick up at the end of the school day. So that is where our code of conduct is right now. We are not proposing any changes to our code of conduct in response to House Bill 959, okay? So we have spoken to several principals. Ms. Hudson did a little focus group with a couple of principals who have already had this practice in place. One principal does bell-to-bell, so from the date, from the minute the tardy bell rings and instruction begins until dismissal, those devices are to be put away. Another principal really focused more on put away, like out of sight, out of mind. If we don't know you have it, it's not a problem. And then the last principal that we talked to did a check-in, checkout system where when the students checked their Chromebook out from their teacher at the beginning of class, they turned their cellphone into the teacher, and it stayed within the teacher's control during that time period so that the kids didn't have to worry about if someone was going to take it or it was under the teacher's control during the entire time it was checked into the teacher. So on July 18th, we met with the principals virtually to explain this so they could go ahead and start working with their administrative team and their leadership teams to decide how they wanted to address this new mandate. So the options that we propose to our principals are, as you can see here, for our K-8 schools, all school-serving students in grades K-8 adopt a put-away or out-of-sight bell-to-bell restriction. For 6-8, we recommended the same thing. And then for 9-12, we gave a little bit more option that all school-serving students in grades 9-12 adopt a put-away from the beginning to end of class time. However, bell-to-bell is an option. So the principals can choose any of these for the time on school, but they can go more restrictive if they choose to, depending on what they feel is best and their school leadership teams feel is best for their campus. This is then an update on the school bus. Students may use the device, and this is in the law, correct? Okay, students may use the device, but volume must be low and headphones used. Drivers can limit the device use if safety is a concern. Okay? And down at the bottom, you can see that there are options that principals can choose to use in addition to these things. A lockbox or a magnetic pouch, that's an option. And then exceptions are allowed for this if a student particularly has like a medical condition that requires them to have their cellphone to monitor, you know, part of their medical condition. If there's communication needs, so say we have a storm come in and practice has to be canceled, the administrator can tell the students, go ahead and get your cellphone down, text your parents to let them know practice has been canceled. And then administrator-approved translations, safety plans, or any assistive communication that students might need. So we propose these as options, and each school will decide their approach to adhere to law and policy. So we are asking them to decide that approach. They're letting student services and senior leadership know how their school will approach that, just so we can, we know if we get contacts from parents or families. And then we will, we're asking the school administrators to clearly and consistently communicate the school approach to students, families, and parents to implement the cellphone-free school environment starting on August 25th of the first day of school.
2025, sorry, not 2026, 2025, okay. Thank you, Emma.
Look, does our policy uphold what the policy that was sent from the legislature? I mean, when I look at that policy, it looks like I'm reading a policy from a different school system. Because when I go in the, the buildings, I see cell phones everywhere.
I hear you, sir. And I think that's why we want to shake it up in our policy.
Are we shaking it up?
Well, we've asked the school administrators to revisit.
But when they revisit, what do you mean revisit?
They have to tell us which option they're going to use at their school level, whether it's going to be bell-to-bell, out of sight, out of mind, check-in, check-out.
Then let me add here, Mr. Vice-
The thing I'm saying is that's the, what we have up there in our policy has not worked. Because we have some principals have, they will turn, the kids have to turn their phones in when they walk into class. And because cell phones, if a kid's got a cellphone on, they can get to it without that teacher seeing it. If somebody else is walking around in the room, they'll see it. I've seen it. You know, I've been in classrooms and I've seen cell phones out. And I do think that kids, you know, they need their cellphone in case of danger or something. I'm not saying take it away permanently, but going into that classroom, I just think it's important, more so than what we have seen in the past. Our policy, I don't believe is going to shake up anything.
I will just say, we have clearly communicated to school administrators, and I think they all understand. I will say, in schools that had prior to the law done something to, to take these measures, to have cell phones turned off, put away in bags for an entire school day, or the administrator who has them, lock them, they get their Chromebook in homeroom and lock them up, they both report significant decreases in discipline.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, and I think they have had a lot of success, but they had a lot of communication. And our expectation is that other administrators will be doing that at the start of this year. But what works for their school? Because what worked for one school, in the case of the one that has the lockbox, she said, I thought about doing, you know, the turned off, but that just doesn't work with my families. Yeah, so we have the lockbox. And then the other administrator says, nope, everybody has been committed to keeping them put away. We have really close monitoring of it. And honestly, he has seen a significant decrease in discipline himself. So it depends on the school climate, the community, and what they think will work in their schools to establish this substantial decrease.
We'll get Jenna.
So I've had a couple of parents ask me about cellular smartwatches. What about watch technology?
So that is addressed in the policy. And the idea is that the watch would not be turned on, and Carol- read for you exactly what's here, so I want to make sure we say this accurately. Students in any grade level may wear smartwatches throughout the school day, but when any features that require wireless connections to a smart, any features that require the connection to the smartphone need to be disabled. So we're not using the watch to circumvent to text our friends.
This would be the first year that this policy be in place, correct? So we'd be able to tell at any of you how well this policy works.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, if I may.
Let me, that policy that was up there, was it the same policy we had last year?
So, if I, if I may, yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair. The first policy, if you go back to your original slide, this is the current policy that we have as a district. I think you need to go back one more. Keep going forward, keep going. You're going the wrong way, I believe. It has the current policy now, which is just our district policy discussing what happens with the cellphone and confiscation. At this time, we now have the law saying that you cannot have, you know, the cellphone ban law. So what we're doing is we're tightening up the policy that's in alignment with what the law says that we have to do.
And see, that's what I was-
Yes, sir. I heard you, I was trying to jump in and say, so our new policy now says, principals, you don't have a choice. You have to select one of those, if you go to the next slide, you have to pick one of these three options. Let us know which option you've chosen. So what we've decided is here's the baseline for every school. This is the baseline for every school. You can go even more as a school and say, we're going to have a lockbox or a magnetic pouch to put it away. But every school and every principal will be expected- But every school and every principal will be expected to follow what Ms. English and our attorney has laid out for cellphones.
I feel better.
Yes, sir.
About that.
So I guess where I should speak in, when we talked about the code of conduct, is our current code of conduct description is in, in line with the mandate.
Right.
So we don't, this is our code of conduct and Emma's talking about, Ms. Hudson's talking about the policy update.
Right.
So our, the way we, I've had principals look at this to make sure we didn't need to revise it. So we're in line with this mandate already, with our code of conduct.
Are there other questions?
There is, because I, I, I play both sides of the fence on this one. Ninety-eight percent of what we do on a daily basis is through our cellphones and watches. What, where, where is the money going to come if the principal says, "I want lockboxes and magnetic pouches for everybody?"
So what we would do is for currently in Ms. English's budget that we get from the state, there could be some funds left over from that, or, or principals could use their own school funds. So as a district, that's why we've elected to have a base to say that it's out-of-sight, out-of-mind, where that does not require funding because some schools, they don't need a lockbox. It can be left in the bookbag. It can just be put away, it could be put in a bin where students aren't accessing it. It would be very expensive if we got lockboxes or pouches for every single class, but some schools do have that or have had that and they've utilized their state and state funds or their local funds to be able to do that. So there are some options that principals will have if they want to, want to do that.
One more question. Have we had any cases where damage has been reported from confiscation? No.
Not to my knowledge. Not to our knowledge.
For now.
Yes, sir. And I will-
Do we even know in the last year, number of phones that was confiscated? We haven't started the new year yet.
We do not know that number, sir. We, we don't usually keep that statistic, but we do know, we don't know how many write-ups there were and we could provide that information to the board if that is helpful.
I would just say that this is a law and we, we have to follow it. And, you know, we, we've talked about liability and retrieving phones and we've had those conversations. However, we don't want, as a district, to make a larger issue of, we know what can happen when we take students' phones.
Right.
We know exactly what, what, what can happen. As parents, we know what can happen when we take a phone. So what we're trying to do is minimize. The standard expectation is when you go into class, that phone by law is not out, it's not visible, and it's away, and we're not causing challenges for principals or assistant principals or teachers when it comes to cellphones. We're trying to make sure we have a standard way of addressing the issue. Now, if principals want to do the lockbox or the yonder pouches, pouches, and it works with their school, they certainly can do that.
Any other questions?
And I would say, this coming year, we'll see how well this works and if the principals need other tools to use, then I'm sure we are finding a way to get them.
We'll see, the, the whole state will see how this works.
I have a follow-up question. I can't, real quick. Sorry, I'm sorry, Bishop. I apologize. But I've, I've been firsthand witness of this and this is why I want to ask you. Will each school release the statement or a policy letter to go home with the kids saying, "This is our policy at this school"? Because I've seen Johnny A. get his phone taken out, taken, and Johnny B. can walk around talking on it all day and nothing happens. So that's, because I'm, I'm very adamant about if my kid needs to reach me for any reason, he should be able to reach me for any reason. And if he's get his phones taken as soon as he gets it out of his bag, but Lucy over here can call her mom because she missed her lunch, then that's where the problem's going to be for me.
I think Ms. English?
I will say, we have very, also very clearly communicated, because I have heard this from many, I've heard this from students, like consistency and expectation, even for high schoolers, is what has been expressed as a desire. And so that is something we have communicated to principals. This needs to be consistently enforced. This rule is consistent across your building. I will note, the administrator who takes phones at the beginning of the day, they get locked, they get them at the end of the day when they return their Chromebook. She actually has a very robust, and we've talked to them about this as well, a robust policy allowing students to go and call their parents from the office phone at any point in the day if there's something that they need to communicate. She does not cut their access off to that. She said the only reason she will do that is if the admin, if the parent calls her and says, "My kid's calling me too much. Can you please ask them to, to stop?" That, that is, but that is, that is, they, they need to have alternative means in place to support students and/or if there's a situation, you know, where we just need a very brief duration communication home, we can have staff. You know, if there's a hundred kids on a football team, you may not want all of them to go call in the office. You may want them to just send the text to say, yeah.
Especially with coaches now saying, well, it's the student's responsibility to communicate. My kid's 12 years old.
Yes, right.
When's he going to communicate if he doesn't have his phone? And I'm working till five, but he don't have practice. And now he gets out at 3:40 and I have no way to get him.
We were very clear in explaining that to principals. And on the second bullet, one of the things we're asking them to tell us when they tell us how they're handling this, is how they're communicating. So how and when it will be communicated with parents, staff, and students.
Mr. Chair, it's interesting, we all get phone calls on various and sundry things. And I get phone calls about cellphones at certain schools, and I don't get phone calls about cellphones at other schools. And that's the reason why it really needs to be stressed that this is, whatever they do, they need to make sure that they get the word out and get it consistent at the very beginning and don't take your foot off the stove later.
All right. And I'm sure our superintendent will address this. In the principal meetings that they be having, that he'll address all concerns with the principals, correct?
Certainly do.
Thank you very much.
If the board wishes.
Yes, sir.
So we would just ask, and if any board member has questions about the policy between now and your September meeting, we would ask that the policy come on for a second reading on your September meeting date. Again, with principals communicating at the beginning very clearly, this is what we're planning to do. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Emma? Information update regarding the Senate Board, please.
Thank you. So also, as part of state law, we are required now by the state of North Carolina, as all public school systems are in this state, to show videos produced by the North Carolina Center for Safer Schools to students in grades six through 12 within the first five days of this academic year. The videos are to address at least, these videos address at least likely warning signs indicating that a child may be a victim of abuse or neglect, including age-appropriate information on sexual abuse. The videos do begin with content focused on grooming behavior and sexual offenses against students by school staff before being followed up with a PowerPoint displaying those warning signs. We, they, the videos were recently placed on the center's YouTube page. We are working to get information out to our families about these from schools. We have emails for principals to send. Parents of students in sixth grade will be afforded the opportunity to opt out of the screening of the videos. Students in grades seven through 12, their parent, or excuse me, they will have the opportunity to opt in. Parents in grades seven through 12 will be given the opportunity to opt out. The reason sixth grade gets an opt-in, and we have to have affirmative permission again, is the Overton window of curriculum for sixth grade students does not traditionally include these topics. Seven through 12, it is certainly part of, of health and PE curriculums. So that is, that is our plan. We will be communicating this with families, affording them the opportunity to watch these. Our staff will also receive a screening of a video that is designed for staff. We will also afford families the opportunity to review facilitator guides and discussion questions in addition to the videos. And truly, if they wish to opt their children out, that is, that is, our principals are going to work with families. For whatever reason, it may be that someone has something in their past and it's just too, too upsetting. Whatever the reason may be, we are going to respect families' wishes. I do just wish to note that public school staff are highly trained professionals. They undergo extensive background checks before they are hired. Of course, if there is not something in a background check that we do not know about and something arises later, we address that very promptly in the district. Our policies do address our expectations of staff and their own reporting obligations when this behavior is observed in schools. And just to clarify our processes, yes, there is an immediate report. Our human resources department, as well as law enforcement, are involved in an investigation. If an allegation is substantiated, while we normally don't say this as an attorney in an HR matter, the staff member is terminated. That's just, we, we really do not have any in-between consequences for, for this type of behavior. And then if the staff member is, is certified or licensed by the State Board of Education or they resign while an investigation is pending, we are required to report the matter to the State Board, which may take action against the individual's license. I just note that our policies do mirror this. And of course, our staff are highly trained in reporting any concerns, whether they arise outside of school or within a school building, to administrators, something that we take very seriously.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
At this time, we go into our closing comments, starting with our wonderful superintendent, Dr. Steve Lass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it was great to see and celebrate our staff and our students tonight, and it's just good to see everyone and to be back with our wonderful board members. I have missed everyone and I'm looking forward to a great year. Really quick, I'd like for our new staff to please stand new to their roles, sitting behind our chiefs, chiefs, if you all will stand, from Dr. James, Mr. Burns, if you all will stand. If you'll wave your hand, Dr. James is our new Director of K-12 Instruction. And then we have Ms. Keachlin Jones, our new HR Director. And then we have Dr. Monica Ja, Monica Jacobson, our new Executive Director of High Schools. We have Dr. Robert Batts, who's our new Executive Director of Middle Schools. And we have Mr. Derek Burns, who is our Executive Director of Elementary Schools. And we're just so excited to share them with everyone. And we did take a few of them from some other counties, so we're excited to welcome aboard to all of them. The summers, oh. Our summer has been very productive. It's been quite busy, but it's also been emotional for our community. And I just want to acknowledge the loss that we've had. We lost three students this summer, including one who had recently graduated from JH Rose. And so we ask that you keep those families in your hearts, in your minds in prayer. We know grief does not have a timetable, but we stand with those families in remembrance of their children, particularly Ms. Tracy Everett-Lenz, our former board member who lost our sweet daughter Hayden. We also want to thank our, our senior staff and particularly our Operations Department as well for the work they've done to get our facilities up to par for the academic year, as well as our senior staff who worked really hard, working with our principals, meeting with our principals, instructional coaches, and spending valuable time as we set the compass for the academic year. And we've got some really good momentum. We welcome back this week the faculty, staff, and students at our early colleges. PCC and Innovation, they are back. They are already starting workdays, and I believe the first day for those students is Friday. It's Friday. And so the academic year has, has begun, so we wish them a wonderful year. And we're excited about our community support and rallying around our schools. Thank you, Ms. Olfers, for our, "We love our schools" campaign, ensuring that the community knows what's happening, happening in our schools and the excitement about our, our public schools, Pitt County schools. We're a great school district and we look forward to that first day, everyone holding their signs, donning their shirts, letting people know how much you love all 39 of our schools and then some, because the energy's going to be contagious. So we're excited about that. And finally, I'm honored to start again. Last year, this was a very different seat. And so I appreciate the board and thank the board for giving me the opportunity to cycle through a year and start another year, because I truly believe I'm working alongside the best Board of Education in North Carolina. And I feel blessed and fortunate that you all give me this opportunity and I have the opportunity to work with an amazing team, because we still believe, which is our new thing this year, we still believe. So thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent. Again, our board comments, starting with Kelly. And following Kelly's comments, she's going to share a letter with us from our former board member, Ms. Tracy Lenz.
Yeah, I'm glad to be back. Still kind of in summer mode, right? We still, and our families and our students are still, you know, have a couple, few more weeks that they're enjoying their summer and vacations and, and time together. But I know I'm really looking forward to get back in the routine and the structure and how that is as wonderful as summer is and the freedom. It's good to have that structure and that consistency for our families and our students. Our leaders, our administrators, our teachers have been working so hard this summer to prepare. That's been evident on our social medias and, and it's, it's been evident tonight and seeing how our students are continuing to work during the summer, at their summer conferences, our musical theater students and the work they've, they've done. I know that there have been CTSO conferences across the country that we've had students participating in. So there's, our, our educational journey doesn't end during the summer. There's still a lot of work that's done that we get to celebrate. I want to welcome all of our new teachers that are onboarding, especially some of our international teachers that are coming. I know for our Spanish immersion classes, we've, our, our families have really been rallying around our teachers that are coming from some other countries. And I know that our HR staff is supporting them, but we are, we welcome all of these wonderful educators that are coming. Also want to say how grateful I am that the federal funding was released for our students. And I know there were some points in time this summer where we were trying to navigate and figure out what we're going to do to make sure our students and our educators have what they need. And so I'm really grateful that, that we are able to start the school year off strong with the things that we need for our students and for our educators. I really loved celebrating today, you know, I was thinking as our bus drivers were here and our kids can't learn if they're not there and how vital they are. They're very, they're very much the foundation for our schools. And I, I noticed too, I don't know if you all noticed, but our, our students, just like I see our educators out in the community, our students are everywhere. Some of the students that were here tonight, I've seen as camp counselors at my kids' camps, doing robotics things, doing musical theater things. And it's really lovely to see our students involved in the community. And then my kids, who are younger, getting to see these older students and how these extra activities that they're involved with are so impactful in their educational journey. So I just really love seeing our students all the time. So, yeah, excited to get the year started. I am now going to read a letter from Tracy Everett-Lenz, our former board member representing District One. Hayden Lenz, a student at South Central High School, lost her battle to cancer on July 11th at the age of 15. She was a former student at AG Cox Middle School and Ridgewood Elementary School. Hayden leaves behind an older brother, Coben, I E C H S 2024 graduate, an identical twin sister, Mackenzie, who's a rising junior at South Central High School, and her parents, Tracy Everett-Lenz and Patrick Lenz. The Lenz family would like to express their gratitude to the community at large for all their support and gestures of kindness throughout the past few years. Cancer is the number one killer of our children. Hayden met other PCS students battling cancer through her journey. As a tribute to all of our students battling this cruel disease, the Lenz family would like to issue a challenge for the high schools. Please consider either forming a Riley's Army Club or sponsoring and volunteering through Riley's Army, a nonprofit organization that helps support children battling cancer in their families in eastern North Carolina. Some such volunteer opportunities are the Butterfly Campaign, at which the middle schools can also participate, the Hearts of Gold Gala, the Gold Bow Campaign, and the Toy Drive, and the Toy Drive Collection.
Thank you. Did you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Summertime is always a good time to sort of reflect on the past year and look forward to the, to the future year coming up. But it's also a time that a lot of people are busy, especially in the school system, that a lot of our public doesn't understand are busy. I know, Erin, right now, this is probably your busiest time of the year. And it's because you can get into the schools now and you don't have to wait until after school is out or whatever to fulfill your duties and responsibilities. to, uh, fulfill your duties and responsibilities. And we continue to thank you for a job, it's significantly well done that you and your staff are doing. And it's very, very, um, critical, I think, to understand that to do your job better, we still got to find ways and means in order for you to build upon your staff with, uh, people who are experts in the areas that they are, because it is vital and important. Uh, secondly, um, you know, one of the things that Pitt County Schools is very good at, and that is teachers teaching teachers. And we do that a lot, experienced teachers teaching the, 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 the teachers that come in that maybe don't have the experience. But there's another, um, approach that we use in Pitt County Schools that I don't think a lot of people, uh, realize. And that is, we have a lot of our teachers that have been appointed by various and sundry, um, institutions to be lead instructors for various, uh, in-service opportunities. One of those is the partnership that we have with the University of Mount Olive, who has selected one of our own, Shelley Almer, to provide in-service opportunities for all the agriculture teachers east of I ninety-five in some of the agricultural, um, instructional areas that we teach. And Shelley did a magnificent job this summer, leading several teachers from other school districts. We are a leader and, uh, our institutions, partnering institutions understand and know that. One of the things I, I think I've heard more about this summer than anything else is, Benjamin, when are they gonna take that school bus away? That's got that, uh, banner on there about, uh, needing school bus drivers. And, uh, so, uh, I will, uh, just echo this. Uh, we got those school buses out there and those banners out there because we need school bus drivers. And we need, oh, that would be interested in coming, so please make sure that you check us out. We are a tremendous employer for school bus drivers. And then finally, and not.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would like to first of all congratulate all of our, um, great scholars that were recognized this, um, evening receives presentations and to all staff members, um, that got special recognition. Um, want to say welcome to all our new staff members, we're glad to have you. Thank you for choosing Pitt County Schools and just know that we're looking forward to all the great work that you'll be doing here. Um, don't forget, I'm gonna help Beth out this evening, don't forget to get your T-shirt and Dr. Lassiter too. Uh, don't forget to get your T-shirt, I think you said only five dollars? What best way to get a T-shirt to support the school system? So I'm sending the punch out for the T-shirts this afternoon, cuz it would look good if we all were just wearing them around in the community, in the grocery stores, you know, just to be proud of our school system, Pitt County Schools. So I'm looking forward to getting my T-shirt, I'm gonna go ahead and let you know, I don't like T-shirts, but I'm gonna wear your T-shirt, okay? Um, I've had an opportunity this summer to visit over at South Greenwood with Ms. Cook. She had cookies with Ms. Cook to get to meet the new principal. Um, also, on tomorrow, I'll be going over to Ridgewood because Ms. Juan is going to be having, um, a evening where she'll be meeting and greeting, where she'll be serving pop, pop, pop on over and chill with Ms. Juan. Meet a gre- meet a, meet and greet with a sweet treat, so I'll be traveling there tomorrow to visit, uh, Ridgewood. But I have to tell you all, I love my schools, I love all of them, but I have to always shout out my schools because they're the ones that have me here, I represent them. But just know I, I also represent all students here at Pitt County School. Again, special prayer to, um, our former board member in the loss of her daughter. I sit in her position actually, when she had to, um, kinda like step out, she stepped out and you all chose to let me step in. So thank you, I hope I, I'm serving this position, um, as she was, she fit. And the last thing I wanna say, praying for all schools that you'll have a successful beginning and remember, we still believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Bishop, uh, try to keep mine short so we can get out of here. Uh, as they said, welcome to all our new staff, uh, looking forward to seeing what y'all do and the good work y'all put out. Um, thoughts and prayers go out to all they have lost this summer, including a former board member. I, I can't even fathom the, I don't, there's no words. But just to know that we're, we're thinking about you and praying for you every day. Um, congratulations to all the winners. I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Tricia and Ms. Anderson for speaking in the public forum. Uh, that is one of the only ways sometimes that we get to hear voices from different opinions and different walls of life. And I, I look forward to it every board meeting, uh, so I want to thank you for continuing to use your voices to stand up for what you believe in. Um, I think it's a great way to start this year's board meeting, there was a lot of positive, a lot of questions being asked and I, I hope it continues to go that way, I've enjoyed my few months here and I'm looking forward to the next three years. Um, and the last thing I will say is, we do love our schools and I am very, very, very grateful that it is about to start back. I got three kids that are ready to go, so I am grateful for Pitt County Schools, every day that we're in session.
Alright, that was, that was really good. It is good to be back, um, and I do agree, I think there's so much talent in this room and so much heart and so much heart in Pitt County Schools. And I had the privilege over the weekend to support, um, a community back to school event. And so it was a combination of Heartoscope, which is a local nonprofit, it kept out the side. So we served, um, over four hundred children, um, our host of students with the leadership of Reed Potts, um, they brought a hundred and fifty backpacks. There were booths, we had two hundred and fifty bowls of ice cream with the superintendent. He met so many parenting children and had energy the entire time. And every child that came through that room, he was getting hyped up about school. Um, it was just, it's such a beautiful event, we did over, this year, last year we did fi- fifty, this year a hundred sports physicals. So that means we picked up not only children's ability to play in our school's sports, but vision issues. Um, children who didn't know they had high blood pressure, children with scoliosis, um, children with depression. And so it is so important that we have these opportunities in our community where we embrace children, get them excited, get them meeting our leadership, but then also create access to health. So I wanna give a shout out to Contentia Health, who has our clinic at Rose High School. And for parents, um, and we also had vaccinations for the first time at this event. But if your children still need vaccinations, sports physicals, um, or just in general, the Rose Clinic is open Monday through Friday, eight to four. And that's for staff too, so we wanna make sure our staff know that they're also, their health is also supported through that clinic. Um, this summer I've had the privilege of going to a couple Hunt Institute meetings where I get to meet legislators, county commissioners, city council people. People are out there fighting for our kids statewide and I am just, we do have an amazing county and have people come and talk about their heart and what their heart is. As long as it's centered on what's best for all children, I get so excited to hear your voices, so continue to come and support all children. And then the last thing I'll say is, for anybody interested in joining or starting up PTOs, PTA's, academic councils, please talk to Beth Olfers, we have PCS Engage that should be kicking off pretty soon. We need parent engagement in our schools and that's a great way to do it. Um, our schools need lots of positive energy and we always welcome that. And I'm so glad that you mentioned our international educators, uh, they need supplies. And so I've tried to donate some things and I just encourage, if you have the opportunity, there are wish lists, um, to try to support some of our international educators and setting up their households and their classrooms. Um, and then again with Tracy, I, there aren't enough of words. I think, Dr. Lassiter, you said that, that grief is a journey. And so for all of us, we were sitting with you, Tracy, Mackenzie, Coben, um, your family, entire family. It was, um, it's a privilege to know you and to love you.
Thank you, where?
I wanted to mention the, uh, again, the loss of the three students that we had in the county. I'm the pastor at Freedom Baptist Church and, you know, I have to conduct a lot of funerals. And you can conduct old, you know, the middle age, but when you have to conduct a funeral for a child or a young person, there's just something there that only the Lord can help you through, you can't get over it by yourself. And, uh, Tracy, uh, I know it's tough for her and there will be a long time of memories, um, good memories. And, but anyway, we need to remember them after things happen like that, not just short term, but long term. Another thing I did want to mention is, again, I'm, uh, pastor at Freedom Baptist Church and Beth, you need to hear this, August the ninth, that's this coming Saturday, from eleven to one, we're having a back to school bash at Freedom. And we're giving away book bags, calculators, high school calculators, um, uh, lunch boxes, um, all kinds of games that they would be able to participate in. A lot of school supplies, paper, pencils, and there even be a, will be a dunking booth there and the pastors got to get in. Eleven to two, it's eleven to two. But all my grandkids, they've said, Papa, if we can't hit you with that ball, we're gonna run up there and hit you. But anyway, I just appreciate everyone coming out.
Thank you, not to keep you here any longer, I do want to apologize again, thank you for being so patient with us tonight. We apologize that we took a lo- little longer handling business that was important for our schools, but thank you for being patient with us, those that are here and those that have been viewing our meeting on tonight. Again, uh, I do wanna say that we will also be doing the same thing, August nineteenth, at our Life Center there in Beowulf. Uh, we're scheduled to be at Welcome Middle School, but they're not complete with their gymnasium, so we had to move it. So August the nineteenth, we'll be at, uh, our Life Center there in Beowulf. I do wanna say this before I close, uh, Dr. Lassiter, to Gretchen from the Child Nutrition, I thank you for the hard work that your employees have been doing and the volunteers this summer and passing out all those meals in this hot weather. I saw Gretchen one day and I just knew that I was gonna have to take Gretchen to the hospital. She was working hard, she was driving in traffic, she was out there in the heat. And I'm just amazed at how organized they were and how people from all over the county came to get this food. Uh, it was amazing just to see, they had one, one, uh, Tuesday and Thursday, didn't be the end of it on Thursday. And looking forward to seeing them, uh, just to know that staff need to be appreciated for the hard work that they done outside in the heat uh, this summer, it was really beautiful, that's all I have to say tonight. I know we're ready to go, motion to adjourn.
Is that second? Our motion is, I mean, our, meeting is adjourned.